Uh, second is proclamation for salvation army week, Major Linda Payton. She will be here that she will also be. We are opening indication, any objection to that proclamation being on the agenda for Monday?
No objection.
And the third proclamation or the second proclamation, third item under awards and presentations is farm city week. Michael Johnson will be here. He is the. Many chairman this year, any objection to adding that proclamation to the agenda?
Okay.
All right, item four is presentation. I think we talked about this, if y'all want to start getting everything set up, um, we talked about this. A little bit, I kind of challenged some of the staff, uh, to come up with a. Kind of an AI initiative, and this is the result of that team effort and Dale Hollis is going to be here. And we have a representative from polymorphic, is that correct? Who was here as well, but, uh, Dale, why don't you kind of go over what the, the study group is pitching?
Yes, morning. How's everybody doing this morning? All right, thank y'all for having us here. Uh, today it's, I'm Dale Hollis and I'm here with Mo Khan. Um, he's the regional sales director for polymorphic. And so, um, we were asked to, to present a pilot project for AI. That was a customer facing and internal that can sort of augment some of the repetitive tasks that occur. Throughout some of our business, uh, for instance, like a, like a call agent that could probably take in. Calls to the main number and basically solve the issue on that one call, right? So, real quick executive summary, so basically to enhance constituent engagement. To streamline service delivery and modernize internal workflows. So this proposal recommends applying a polymorphic AI chatbot and AI powered voice assistant, so on the phone. And integrated CRM system tailored for Houston County. So these technologies will provide 24/7 support, they can reduce staff workload. And I improved data-driven decision-making, um, to avoid staff overload and citizen frustration created by a manual process. So. I brought Mo on just to, uh, give us the, a demo for.
It's a good morning, commissioners. Appreciate you guys having me over.
Like, thank you.
Absolutely. I was actually in Tennessee flying home and then Dale said, hey, do you want to come over? I'm like, let me see if I can change my flight. So I told my wife, hey, be home a little later than I expected.
There you go.
So in this, in this demo. So I'm going to set this up. So right now we have what's all this, uh, text my go. Houston County website. So, uh, Mo he's going to demo the AI chatbot. So basically. When, uh, a citizen goes on to the Houston County website, the chatbot will be there to answer any question that we have, um. Associated with our website, Houston County. So the content that's within our website. So for the first demo. I need, uh, to get some participation from, from the commissioners here. So, uh, what sort of question do you think? Uh, our citizen would ask if they went to the Houston County website, like what, what, what do you think they would want to know?
How to move your voter registration.
Repeat that, sorry.
How to move your voter registration.
How to move your voter registration. Okay. So Mo was actually typing that into the prompt.
So just to, um, I set the stage a little. So we did an early crawl. So the way, the way this works is we're crawling your municipal website, your ordinances, your. Uh, public information and now so part of the demo we did not adjust like your GIS. So as we start developing this, we'll start adjusting your GIS, then it becomes very specific and very tailored. Part of the benefits of having some type of system like this, there's no staff member will be able to recall some of, some of these answers without looking at multiple places. Before getting the answer, but the workflow is a resident will go to the website, try to find some information. Because you guys are government compared to a business that maybe offers three or four products, you guys offer a dozen products. So the flow is pretty cumbersome going to the website, excuse me. With the chatbot, you'll have that two click, uh, what we call two-click city. Within two clicks, you go to the chatbot, you speak in natural languages, these are AI models are so good now, you can. It can interpret what residents are asking because another part of government communication, I've been doing. I've been working with communication for like 10 years now in the local municipality area, mostly in the south, uh, southeast region. Uh, communication is always an issue, like how do I ask that question? As a resident, I don't know how to ask that question. I don't know where to go. And if I find an ordinance that's, uh, 700 pages long, I don't know where to look or I probably won't look at it, right? With these language models, they can tap into that, that all those ordinances and find the section that needs reference that. And then once we incorporate like GIS, you'll be able to ask like, hey, what is your address? And then you can get really specific. Can I, can I start farm on my lot? Can I have a shed on my property? Can I have an auxiliary dome unit? And in government, it's always, it depends, right? So as a staff member, you typically will answer the phone. After you go to the phone tree, whichever, however long that takes, you're pounding one, someone answered. Hey, actually, we don't handle that. Let me transfer you to another department. So there's sometimes. Yeah. So then, um, and then after hours, then you call the commissioners, but hey, no one's answering any of that. Right? So, so that's where, uh, this comes in. So, uh, we did an early crawl a few months ago, uh. When, uh, when we originally started like exploring this opportunity. So if they, if they pick that up, then I'll be able to answer this question if it exists on the website today. If that information or if, if who was able to find that. So here it looks like it was, right? So, um, to move your registration, you typically need to update your address. Uh, check the deadline and here's the link to the website, uh, where you can actually go and do this information.
One of the, the neater things that we've had some discussion like let's, let's say that information was not on the website. Uh, and it didn't know how to answer it. Boy, we're, we're going to know what questions people are asking that we don't provide answers to. So then we can go up. Go and either update the model or, or update the website with the information that people are requesting, but they can't find.
Exactly. And because it's crawling the website, you don't have to go and update this, then update the website. You just update the website and we'll, we'll notify you, we'll work, work with you. Your customer success manager, her name is Danielle. She's actually born and raised out of Montgomery. She lives in North Carolina now. But she'll be handling this account and she worked, she'll work on checking tonality, accuracy, response rates is, um, is, uh, this app. Is the system answering those questions as a chairman indicated? Right? So if it's not answering, we'll add in additional FAQs, we'll, we'll, uh, notify whoever our stakeholder groups are, say, hey, you got to update that content on the website. Another part of this, a lot of municipalities are using like town of Palm Beach, um, they had 1,500 pages on their, their website, which they didn't realize all the time added up. Using the system, they were able to find a lot of contradicting information over time and reduce their website down to 400 pages. So eliminating all that, um, a lot of, uh, just bad data online. And it's government, it, it happens all the time. You archive a lot of data, you have data to pile it up, but then that creates contradiction with these AI models. So we clean it up. We're testing rigorously, uh, over and over. The idea really is to reduce staff time. A good example is Pensacola, Florida. There they have a 301 stat, uh, department to ladies answer the phone. But 70% of the calls that come into them are not meant for them. They're meant for Florida DOT, they're meant for the county. But because they want to deliver that white glove customer service experience, they'll go on white, like, uh, Florida DOT's website and put in the pothole requests. And so, but they're doing someone else's job. They're not doing their job. With these language models, it'll be able to actually say, hey, the county or you're outside of the, this, uh, county lines. Uh, you're most likely, you should reach out to this city, your city or this, uh, county or the Alabama DOT, whoever handles that. So as we start, as over time, we'll start, um, we'll clean up the data with you guys. And we'll make sure it's really tailored and accurate. Right off the bat, it's typically going to be around 85 to 90% accurate. But within the first of two months of working together, you get to that 95 to 99% accuracy rate. Any other questions?
I have a question. If you got someone that calls in and does not want to go through this process. Would they have an option to talk to someone?
Absolutely. So we set up the transfer line. So on the, so what we showed you here was the chatbot on the website. Then AI voice essentially replaces that phone tree altogether. So the answer is, hey, this is Houston County's AI assistant. How may I help you? And we could, we could play around with it. We could call it a queue, ask queue or whatever, however you guys want to go about that. But, um, as a resident says, hey, transfer, transfer me to a department, it'll transfer right away. It will, it won't block you like a Comcast where it asks you for 10 different forms of information before transferring you. Yeah, we actually, I set a demo up for you guys. Um, so since, since, um, I spoke, we spoke to Chairman Brandon and Dale. We actually started out, we released a few more updates. So now the AI voice can actually do a ticketing, uh, can do ticketing and routing. So the CRM, you'll be able to, I'll be able to call in and say, I want to report a pothole. It'll collect that data from me. And then it will create a ticket and then route that to the right department, paying the right, uh, uh, case worker, whoever's handling that via email. But then as a executive team, you'll have a full dashboard of all the cases that are coming up. And are we meeting our SLAs? You'll, you'll be able to create some of these like KPIs. Maybe we want to respond to folks in seven days. Well, you'll be able to actually see that live as, as tickets are opening and being, uh, being on top of it. Essentially just streamline that whole process. Cause a lot of purpose that come in today are applications. Typically in government, we're seeing 70 to 8% error rate. Maybe it's the wrong application, the wrong dollar amount, the wrong information, handwriting was misspelled. So we, we're reducing that through the, through the digital form, but also with AI doing the insight process. Any other, any questions or I can, I'll do the call?
Any other questions?
You have a question, did you?
So I can, I can showcase what the call looks like.
You've reached the automated attendance for Houston County on a recorded line. How may we serve you today?
I'd like to report a pothole.
Thank you for letting us know you like to report a pothole. I can help you with that. Could you please provide the nearest address and location of the pothole?
462 North Oak Street.
Sorry, can I remember the address?
Providing the address, 462 North Oak Street. Could you please describe the pothole for me? For example, is it large? See if we're causing any specific issues. Any details you can share will help.
Yes, it's on the, uh, left lane on the, going eastbound.
Thank you for that detail. Could you please finish your description?
Yeah, it's about, I don't know, foot, foot wide.
On the left lane going eastbound. Can you tell me more about its size, depth, or any hazards it might be causing?
Yes, my, uh, I ran over it and my, I blew my tire out. But, but I hang out there. So the idea is once, once you submit that, uh, or once you, once you go through the process, then it's going to create, uh, a ticket for you. I'll show you what that looks like. My, if it will load here, there you go. So an automatic ticket was opened, a Mo Khan called, he reported this, it's going to summarize the, uh, the conversation. It's going to route that, route that to the right department and you'll have full access and full, all that information here. So a human never had to, uh, put that out, brand to that call. So your rep, so your staff members can continue doing the work that they came here to do. But what some of our side, we're working with over 200 municipalities at this point, and what we see is around. Forty to 50% of their time, our staff members' time is spent just answering the phones and answering the same questions over and over again. We have pretty good case study with Orange County, Florida, their permitting department. They have a permitting issue right now. Permits are not going out fast enough. They're behind around almost, uh, 60 days. And that's because despite having a 301 department within their, uh, their building safety department. 2,600 calls that come in, pull in planners. So by the end of the year, they have two full-time planners answering the phones as well. So now they're not able to get, uh, permits out fast enough. It kind of worked out for me when they discovered this, when I was in the planning zoning, uh, room. Uh, a builder actually reached out to the commissioner, commissioner came to the planning department to complain and I was sitting there and, uh. The director of planning was like, actually, this gentleman is here to fix this. And I was like, here's the contract. So we integrated with their permitting system and now residents can call in and say, hey, what's the status of my permit? How do I apply for a permit? And it's multilingual as well. So you get through that whole process without needing a translator, without needing human intervention. And the idea again is to free up the staff to get back to work. But if it needs a human, it's always going to transfer it, right? So it's right department the first time around.
Yeah.
So I got a question.
Yes, sir.
We operate on work order, uh, teams.
Yes.
So we, is this an after hour deal?
Uh, yeah, so we can, we can schedule it as after hours. Um, I, I use the word ticket loosely. I mean, it's more, more or less a workflow system. Uh, case management and workforce system with CRM. So as you can see on top, you're building a profile as well, as well. So you'll have that historical data of how many times Mo called about this pothole. Maybe he's just one of those people that keeps calling in and you'll have that history of, of all that data there. So it, as a, it can be a workflow as well. So if you guys are using certain systems that have open A to Y's, we can also integrate. We're, we don't want to come in and replace anything. We're, we're working with a lot of existing systems today like City Works, Tyler E. L., uh, Tyler Muniz. So we can integrate work into these systems.
My question was, is this after hours? Because we, we, we encourage people to call the office and report these so we can get all the data during workout. Is this after hours? Cause I don't want it to circumvent our, our people answering the phone during the day.
Right. Yeah, so this would be, this would be 24/7. It's been 24/7. But if they wanted to speak to Roadbridge, they could, right? Say, I want to talk to somebody in Roadbridge.
The way that's doing now during the day, if it creates this ticket, then we're going to have to turn around and call people back to get the information that's in the.
Yeah, I don't, there, there may be some things that we don't, you know.
And that's what I'm asking, if we can tailor it to.
Yeah, it can.
Perfect after hours, uh, but during, during workout hours, yeah, we would rather talk to them.
Now we, now we can also, y'all have a separate phone number than, than we, so we don't have to turn on every phone to.
Right.
And we can schedule, we can put schedules, we can, we, exactly. We don't have to tailor all the numbers to follow to this. We'll maybe just the main line. And then if you want to call the department specifically, you can still dial that number specifically.
I mean, I think it's great for after hours.
Yeah, I think it's pretty neat. Um, we, we have a small business. We don't. We don't get a lot of web traffic just, just because the nature of the, of the business. Most people are looking for hours and you can get that on Google, looking for a phone number, you get that on Google. You don't necessarily click to go to the website. But I was shocked by. How many, matter of fact, while I've been sitting here, my phone's been buzzing because I get an alert when someone contacts and they have a question pops up on my watch. And I, I think we've got two or three, but in a given day, we may get 250 to 300 visitors on the website. Like I said, not a whole lot. But we get a dozen, a two dozen chat messages a day and a lot of times they're looking for things that's. Easily, in my mind, you could easily find it on the website, but these, in this day, you want an answer. You don't have to click and look, you just. How do I get a permit for a driveway pipe? I don't want to search this Byzantine website, you know, how do I get a permit for driveway pipe? Information is, and it, and it, and even if we have a form, I think we do have a form now, it can link to the form. So. Um, and then the other thing, I was in the, Peter was out, I think for a couple of days, a trip recently, um. Uh, was visiting you on a buddy board and Peter's like going through his, his messages and like. Probably all the messages didn't really pertain to you at all. But he's having to check his message. So I mean, I think this would free up a lot of time for our staff, uh, but. It is a change and I don't want to understate that. So that's why we did not, we're not voting for the budget amendment today. I'm hoping, uh, if you're interested in this and want to know more. Uh, talk to Dale and schedule a kind of more in-depth one-on-one because we got to get moving on today, but. I wanted him to kind of preview it for y'all and give y'all some things to think about. Maybe visit with Dale, get more in-depth demo before you vote on this, uh, hopefully at the next commission meeting.
What I would like to see is when they call in, they have the option to talk to somebody. Or do this, cause younger people are also going to take this Friday every time. But the older people that's 50 and above wants to speak to someone.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Cause they want, you know, they want that interaction with a human being. I'm the same way.
Yeah. Any other questions? Closing thoughts? Got a minute?
Uh, the last, I guess I would just hear a couple more ideas that we just think through. So like Burlington Animal Service in North, in, uh, North Carolina. They have three staff to answer the phones and they received 30,000 calls last year just in that department. But 80% of that call volume was just Q and A. So then we did the conversion, they spent around 80,000 human hour services, just answering the same question, is this dog available? How do I adopt the dog? How do I apply to, uh, how do I apply to volunteer? All that has been reduced now. They've, they've launched AI voice and they've reduced that entirely. Their 200 weekly voicemails have reduced down to two voicemails. And residents are, are getting their answers quicker, they're moving out faster. And now they're able to care for their, the animals and get all their casework done, um, at an extreme, like extreme rates. I think they're down to, uh. Actually human interaction, around 5,000 calls only.
All right, we should appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, moving on to the regular, moving on to the regular agenda, we have, uh, nine items for your consideration. Item number one is, uh, to adopt a resolution approving the issuance of public finance authority of its. Public finance authority, is that worded right? Public finance authority revenue bond solely for the limited purpose. Of section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code, we need to clean that up. And I'm going to ask somebody that knows a little bit more about this than I do. Matt Parker, Colton, whoever wants to come up. All right. I reached out to Matt when I got this, uh, uh, email and I was like, what in the world is this talking about? And Matt knew exactly what it was. So Matt, I'm going to let you take it away.
All right. Thank you very much, Chairman, Commissioners, uh.
I gotta hit it.
Uh, what we have before us here is basically, we've got an entity, uh, based up in Wisconsin. And they're issuing $190 million of, of bond to issue debt, um, per acquisitions of oncology centers throughout the country. So it's a nationwide issue. Part of that issue includes a facility in Deaton, Alabama, uh, 4274 West Main Street, uh, Dr. Patel's, um. Facility. There's also a facility, um, in Coffey County and Covington County that is part of this debt issuance. And really all this is, um, is because they are seeking tax exempt financing from a federal income tax purposes. They have a, they have a requirement called section 147F, uh, under the Tax Equity and Physical Responsibility Act. And so wherever that project is, you have to have a host, uh, government entity. Approve a resolution that basically says that you had a public hearing. Because again, they're going with tax exempt financing, uh, you published a notice. And then the host county approves that resolution basically to acknowledge that it's basically an administrative process. Sometimes you wonder why things evolve like this over time with, with the tax exempt bonding laws. Out there, but that's all it is. So you're strictly administrative. Uh, you're doing a hearing, you're passing the resolution as a host, um, county because the facility is in here and that's all you're doing. You are not guaranteeing a bond. You're not obligated to pay the bond out. This is a private activity bond that is based on the operations of these facilities. So. You're just, you're just basically checking a box administratively. That's all there is. But it's required under, under federal law that we got to do this. So, uh, there was two ways to do the public hearing. One was to do a in-person public hearing or a telephonic public hearing, which we have scheduled for. Tomorrow, uh, Friday, you know, two o'clock. Uh, they can dial in, that's been posted on the county website. So we have fulfilled the obligations required to help out with this. Uh, Kane Burnett with, uh, Maynard Nexus up in Birmingham is the local contact for, uh, basically Nixon Peabody. He's doing the big bond issue, uh, for the public, uh, finance authority of there. But, um, that's all we're doing. So very simple. We've done this a couple of times over the last 20 years. Uh, similar, doing the same thing. Uh, it was more, one was with the city of Deaton for a project, you know, but. Pretty standard, nothing, nothing to it.
Gotcha.
But again, you're not obligated to, you're not guaranteed anything, no obligations. Yeah, so.
Just, just check in a box.
Just administrative, check in a box.
Got you. Any questions about any of that? Matt, I should appreciate you.
Thank you.
We'll take care of this on Monday. Any, any objection to adding this item to the agenda from Monday? Item number two is a request to appoint Leanne Richardson to the Spectre Care Board of Directors. Hopefully somebody's letting Leanne know. Cause I, they, they did, you did, okay. Thank you. Cause I know I did. Congratulations to Leanne Richardson. Anybody else want to throw their name in the hat for this?
No.
All right. Any objection to adding this, uh, to the agenda for Monday?
No objection.
Item number three is a request to, excuse me, a request from the Revenue Commissioner to close the Revenue Department on Monday, December 15th, 2025. From 11:30 to 1:00 PM for employing training purposes. Mr. Greg.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Yeah, this is going to be a, a, a training session. It's, it's difficult to get. Everybody together all at once to, uh, do, uh, uh, office-wide training session. Um, without having to close the office. And, uh, and, and during this, I'm going to provide them lunch as well. So, um, it's, uh, just to train on the. The, the upcoming end of, the end of tax collection season and the beginning of. Delinquent tax collection season. So we're going to discuss that and go over some things, um, in our meeting.
I talked to Greg yesterday. Um, he said this is kind of a slow time of the year for him, which is why he sort of picked this up.
Yeah, it'll pick up the last two weeks of, of December, but this would be right there on the cusp of it. And then we'll, I'll put some things out on the website, uh, and, um, some signs around the building. Indicating such, uh, but they'll so, they'll see fit that.
Yeah, anything you can do to kind of get the word out and let people know. I know it's a slow time and there may be a few stragglers that come in.
Right.
But, um, we have to prove this because we're the only ones that can close an office. Any questions for Commissioner Holland?
Hmm, no.
Any objections to placing this item on the agenda?
No objection.
All right, thank you. Item number four is a request, uh, to adopt resolution to apply for revolving loan fund for Wiregrass Electric on behalf of Houston County. In amount of $333,000, 1% interest for 10 years. We voted on something similar. Last, at the last meeting, but this sort of cleans some of that up and I think. I can't remember, I wasn't authorized to actually apply for this loan. I think this resolution does that. There was a few items.
This is, you'll.
Yes, please.
This is the one remaining item that's required by Wiregrass Electric, nor be able to. Uh, complete the application for the loan that was approved at the last meeting. They, they required a resolution. So the last one was just the application and authorization for you to apply.
Yeah.
This is the resolution that says the commission has resolved to apply for.
Got you. Any questions? Any objections to placing this item on the agenda?
No objection.
All right. Item number five is a request to approve budget amendment in the amount of $3,000 to assist Hodgesville Volunteer Fire Department Tax Exempt Eligibility Cost. This is. The last one of these that we are doing. And you, Peter dug up an email, I sent in 2024 that. Hodgesville may be the last one that we will have to do and that I think that. That the cost, their cost is quite a bit more than $3,000, but three is. The maximum that we've done really for anybody else. So, um, this was a program that we started in 2019. And so it's been six years to get all of them kind of into compliance, but. Uh, but anyway, this is, this is the last one. Questions for Peter? Any objection to placing this item on the agenda?
No objection.
Item number six is a request to approve memorandum of understanding with CD Bothan Animal Shelter in regard to rabid animals. So, you know, Bothan Animal Shelter used to provide all of our sort of animal services. Um, and we moved to Wiregrass Pets to do most of those. But Wiregrass Pets understandably does not want to house rabid animals. And so we still have to have a place that we could process, uh. Animals that we believe to be infected with rabies. Uh, and Bothan has to provide this anyway because they are of a size where this is required by the state for them to do. And so we're going to sign this MOU, uh, we'll pay them a little bit more money than we have in the past, but. This will not be utilized. That often, only when we have a rabid, rabid animal, which be greater than zero times a year, but it certainly won't be hundreds or dozens. Um, and we still have one sort of un, unmet need in, in regards to animal control. We have to have. A place to house an animal that we suspect may have ra, rabies. And we suspect it is owned, but we don't know who the owner is. This has not happened since 2010, this, this rare edge case. But we do have to legally provide that should that edge case come up and we are in the process of working. Uh, out of an agreement with a local vet to provide that service. So that, that'll be the last thing. uh, out of an agreement with a local vet to provide that service. So that, that'll be the last thing, I think, animal-related that should come before us, but uh, this is definitely a box that we need to check, because we do have, uh, rabid animals from time to time in the county. Any questions? Any objection to placing this item on the agenda?
Okay.
Item number seven is request to award bid for twenty twenty-five Chevrolet Silverado, twenty-five hundred, four-wheel drive, lowest bidder meeting specs, major record, he's not here. Peter.
Thank you, sir. Uh, the major called me this morning and asked, uh, because he was out of town, and I would present this to the commission. This is a, um, a vehicle that'll be, uh, paid for out of the sheriff's discretionary funds. But as you gentlemen know, all, all vehicles need to be titled in the commission's name and under, under the commission's insurance policy. So the commission needs to actually award this bid in order for it to be able to be processed.
Any questions? Any objection to placing this item on the agenda?
No objection.
Thank you. Peter? Uh, well, item number eight is a request to enter into an agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation for the construction of an industrial access project. Resurfacing of Horse Shepherd Road, where Houston County is a sponsor agency for the city of Bothan. Project has been in the work quite some time. Uh, Mr. County Engineer, I don't know if you have any comments or anything?
It's, it's just go along with, with an industrial project, uh, to increase that, uh, that area out there, the resurfacing road, so you do it to us and it is the city. And so we're doing it for the city on this project.
I know Matt's been involved in this one as well. Any questions on this? Mine's coming from the state, and more jobs coming to Houston County, so hard to say no to this. Uh, any objections to that? Any objection to placing this item on the agenda?
No objection.
Yeah. Uh, item number nine is request to approve budget amendment for NPO project on Old Web Road and for contract services on Cedar Springs Road and Gordon Parking Lot Resurfacing Projects. Let's see, this, is this what we're, this is a project that y'all thought you were gonna finish last year, but not gonna be able to finish.
Well, these are all projects that were funded last year. Uh, POs retained last year, the money was accrued last year.
We didn't spend the money last year.
We didn't spend the money last year. The projects were still, they're not completed.
Yeah.
And a lot of our projects take multiple months to complete. So we only have a month after the end of year to get them complete, or the money has, but they don't like to, we have to roll the money over to next year. And you know, where our budget process is, we could have put this in next year's budgets, but they'd have been a million dollars in next year's budget and a million dollars in this year's budget. So.
Yeah.
It, I don't know any other way to do this.
Yeah, so. Any questions?
No.
Any objection to placing this item on the agenda?
No objection.
All right, uh, I think that's it. So this time I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned. Thank y'all.
That's impressive.